It's good to see all of you. We actually have two meetings that will be happening back-to-back this evening. And we do have agendas that are on the podium where Mr. Bruce Green is standing. So if you'd like to grab one, you can certainly follow along with us. Our first order of business is going to be a public hearing, which I'll call on Mr. Wilmot to conduct in just a second. Then we'll have our council workshop. I do remind you that the workshop is just for discussion items only. And then immediately following the workshop, we have a special called meeting because we have three things that are of great importance that we wanted to go ahead and address this evening and vote on, rather than wait till our regular third Monday meeting. The, and then we'll have other business, city manager report, and then mayor and council comments. So, so if you'd like to grab one of the agenda items, please do so. And everything is called to order. So Rob, I'm going to turn everything over to you to conduct the public hearing. Thank you.
This is going to be a public hearing on zoning application PP 22-0035, which received from Edmont Properties LLC. The question would end the plan development overlay to a four-point existing church in the approved site plan. The property is located at 320 West 20th Street, parcel number T040100, and is property 1.55 acres. I would like everyone to know that the city of Tipton's following here procedures and the standards for exercise and zoning powers, that property, Georgia Council of the District are available to hand out and also be coming to the public view. At this time, I'd like to ask the concept questions of the council. Have any of these applicants or opponents get out the case and contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past few years?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of the property, whether it is a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest in real property that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of the property, whether it is a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask Crystal Kader from our publisher, Community Development, to let me know what this application is about.
Starting to get a PowerPoint coming out, so that we better show the public a property question. But as a backstory, this property is located within an approved plan development overlay. The original overlay was approved back in 2006, and the economy has changed and lots of things have changed. And the applicant is now requesting that the approved site plan be amended to incorporate the existing church into it. So originally, the PEO had two buildings on it. You know, this is the plan that they were going to build back in 2006. And those things have changed, and so now they want to just allow the site plan for the existing church to be incorporated into the PEO. Sorry for the technical difficulties. This one's much better explained with...
With pictures.
All right, well, we do have Mr. Jones, the applicant for Edmont Properties LLC, has brought this, her copy here. But this shows on the left-hand side, you have the existing church, and on the right-hand side, you have the VA. And then further to the right, you have what was approved in the plan development overlay originally, which is the building facing 20th Street, and then two buildings south of that. So in a nutshell, the applicant is requesting to change the property lines. They are requesting to divide the marshals to be able to sell the property to the church. So they are requesting to move this yellow line right here over to the west, about 10 feet or so. And that would make the VA's property, just the property that VA is located on, just slightly larger, and it will make this parcel slightly smaller. This parcel would still be a conforming parcel, and we still have the required road run it, and it's protected along with the VA's property. Sorry, at the end of it. There we go. Keep going, keep going. Oh, there we go. Okay, so the picture on the right shows the proposed parcel lines, and the picture on the left shows where the existing parcel lines are. The one on the left is from Q Public. It's slightly outdated. It shows the building in between the church on the left and Nausicaä on the right. And it shows Rich Lane having existed right there, but that lane has since abandoned, and it's no longer going through there. So in a nutshell, they are requesting to incorporate the existing church into the site plan and to slightly alter the property boundaries.
All right, at this time, I'd like to take public comments. Does anyone would like to speak in favor of the application? If you would, you step to the podium and say anything, you're asked.
Yes, Jonathan Jones, 1228 Patriot Drive, here at City of Tipton Properties. It's a family-only, uh, senior entity. This was something that was done, helped get the church, the exit plan in the mid-2000s, and obviously, the real estate kind of collapsed in the coming 2007, and we had to call this closure. But the VA planned opportunity came up, and this is basically an application to remain as is, because the church is kind of a recent property.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
No.
Okay.
Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Mayor, could we offer a public comment, so I ask this?
Okay, all right, thank you, Rob. All right, moving on to our council workshop, we've been called to order. The only item that we will be voting on in the workshop is the approval of the agenda. And that is before you, and Jessica always sends that out in a timely manner so that we can review that, and the public has been noticed, and the media has been noticed. So you have that agenda before you, so I'll take a motion concerning the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Jack. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that carries. Jessica, I don't see Mr. Kader here. Is he not here, Emmett Kader? Am I missing you somewhere? Okay. We were swearing Mr. Emmett Kader to the Tipton Planning and Zoning Board. I do know that he's had some recent knee surgeries, so he may still be a little bit under the weather. So we'll follow up with him and hopefully be able to swear him in at the, at the regular meeting in a couple of weeks. So we'll move beyond that. I've had the opportunity to meet one of our guests this evening, a presentation, Ms. Carla Gervin with the Coastal Plain Area EOA. She is going to talk to us about a low-income household water assistance program. And it's my understanding that you, Councilman Cromer, introduced this idea to the, to us. So if you want to take a few minutes and, and share your information, please do so.
For me, this program is definitely, will relieve a burden for the families that have issues with their water bill. So for me, it is very important that we get on board and help the constituents out there that do have these type of problems. And I feel that this is one of the solutions that we can do our part in. And like I said, she will explain it in more detail, but I'm 100% behind them, and I have all the faith in the world that this is a program that will be a great benefit for citizens of Tipton.
Thank you. Okay, all right, Ms. Carla.
Good evening. I am Carl American, CSB chief director for Coastal Plain. Coastal Plain do not believe without agency. We are...
Your community action agency. Every county in our state has, is assigned to a community action agency where what we do is assist low-income households. We provide rental assistance, we offer food vouchers. This program is the water assistance program. We help with water bills, and then we also have energy assistance program. But what we'd like to do, the water assistance program is, in its first year, I mean, so we have to actually sign a contract. We would like to become partners with the city of Tipton to be able to offer this assistance to your low-income households here with the city of Tipton. We are able with this program to cover arrearses up to $3,500 without the state's approval. So we can cover the entire arrears amount, and the award amounts are issued in the amounts of either $200 or $300, but it is determined by the household size and your income. And I did bring those, those guidelines, if you guys wanted to, to see that and more information about our agency.
Carla, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Your agency will assist as far as getting people informed about the program and setting up times that people actually can come in and make an application?
Absolutely. That's exactly what, what we do. We offer appointment times for, we have a number for the clients to be able to call to set up appointments in our office. And then we also can partner and offer special walk-in days if needed for this area.
I don't see anything that is, is negative about this program. I think this is, this is incredible information. Again, thank you, Councilman Cromer, for bringing this to our attention. And thank you, Ms. Carla, for being here to share this information. You've got a pretty detailed presentation in your packet. So we'll open up the floor for any questions or comments from the council members.
I think it's a win-win.
Yes.
And we appreciate this, and let, thank you for alerting us to, to this program. Certainly, it's been an issue with turning off the water, turning the water back on, turning off the water, turning, you know, that's just, that doesn't help anybody.
That's right.
So this should really be a large majority.
Mayor, I might add that I did have an opportunity to speak with the people down in Valdosta, who are also part of the program, and they're saying that it works extremely well.
Good.
It's really helping a lot of people out. So again, I think credit to Councilman Cromer to bringing, bringing this program to our attention so we can take some action on it.
Absolutely. All right, any other questions or comments of Carla and her team?
Mayor, just for clarification, Ms. Gervin, can you just comment, is this for city of Tipton, or is this in our service area? How does this program work in front of you?
Well, it would, each vendor would have to sign the contract, so yours would only be for the city of Tipton. It can be, it is offered to any vendors that provide water in our 10-county service area. But each vendor would have to separately sign that contract to be able to accept payment from us.
Okay, that, that was my point, because we're the vendor for the city and the county, so we'll just make sure that's annotated correctly. I just wanted you to know that, so, for clarification. So we serve the city and, and the county.
Awesome, thank you.
Carla, thank you so much.
No problem. Yes, thank you. All right, gentlemen, any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. We look forward to working with y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, I don't know what's going on, but my, all my documents are gone. Or y'all's gone?
Yeah, mine's gone.
Okay. All of our documents just disappeared. But we can carry on, all right? And again, when we go into our special called meeting, we will be voting on the low-income household water assistance program, so just be aware of that. All right, the next item is a request for festival designation for Celebrate Creativity Event, and that is the Tipton Council for the Arts. So Jessica, I'm going to turn the floor over to you to present that information.
Yes, Mayor. The Tipton Council on Arts, we have some individuals on that board that are here tonight to answer any questions. They are requesting to utilize the festival ordinance to allow for alcohol at their Celebrate Creativity Event on November the 5th. It's going to be a Saturday. The event be held from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I included a map of that area. It's mainly the area around the SED, the courthouse parking area, and we'll also include Library Lane and part of Love Lane.
Okay.
And so we've confirmed with Tiff County that they could use their parking area, and they're wanting to have one alcohol vendor, which will be Savor the Flavor. And she has the correct licensing, so this is just brought before you, for y'all's consideration.
Okay.
And Ms. Cindy, do you want to add anything? Do you want to, if y'all have any questions to ask her?
I'm visiting here, and I work for the Tipton Council for the Arts. So this is going to be a very family-friendly event. We're going to have probably between 750 and 1,000 attendees. We're going to have, we're going to have Main Street block out, but we will have this sort of, you know, barricades, TV, and movies around the parking spots that are taking a higher suite taste of Tipton vendors. We're going to have Library Lane and the street, and the alley in between the library and the SED. And then the alcohol vendor would be at the very back of Library Lane. And right in hindsight, we're going to have X-Men TV set up with the Georgia game on at the tables for people to sit at, and that's where the alcohol will be. And then, you know, kid friendly stations will get closer to the streets.
Okay.
If you have any questions or comments.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen, concerning the event? It's been a very successful event in the past, so we look forward to, to another successful event this year and supporting the arts in our community. So thank you for that. And I don't think we have any other questions, so shouldn't be, shouldn't be any issues there. All right, next item on our agenda, I'm going to ask Ms. Emily Beeman. She's got a couple of things to present to us. One is the heat program. So Emily, I'll turn the floor over to you to talk about that.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our heat, heating energy assistance team has their annual program that we typically participate in. This is governed through the Georgia Division of Family and Children's Services, and it helps low-income or fixed-income families with their heating bills, utilities, natural gas prices. It's a very volatile system right now with the way prices are going up and going down. The way customers would do this is they, should it be approved, we send out a letter. They're able to make donations through their monthly bill. Should they need assistance, they would contact the Georgia Department of Family and Children's Services. They would notify us and allow us to put those funds towards their bill, so it does help low-income families as well.
Okay. And this is a program we've been participating in for many, many years.
Yes, we do. We always participate in, and we get great feedback from the customers on this.
Perfect. All right, any questions, gentlemen, concerning the heat program? So it sounds like we've got folks, we're helping folks with water, helping folks with natural gas. That's good. That's really, really good.
Great news or not.
Yeah, so, okay. And Emily, since there's no other questions or comments on the heat program, do you want to go ahead and go into the next item, which would be the recommendation for requiring deposits on film permits?
Yes, so here recently, we have had quite a few movies produced in Tipton. It brings lots of people to downtown and to the, to the city. We have found that a lot of other neighboring communities are enforcing a deposit, not in a bad way, and it's something that's reasonable. We'll be asking for a $1,000 deposit when they come in, just for small damages. Should we have to go behind them and clean up for any assistance? If we have to use any personnel that they would use directly for the movie, we would be able to take this out of the deposit versus waiting on funds. Or if the movie is over budgeted, sometimes we may not get those funds, and it may be on the expense of the city. So implementing a $1,000 deposit would help all of this, and should we not have to use that, all of those funds would go back to the production company.
Right. Okay, all right. Any questions concerning the deposits on film permits? And as Emily said, that's, this is a, pretty typical, and they expect to pay that, so, so it's not unusual. It's not going to hamper our ability to attract the film industry or TV industry to come in to, to film here, so. So any questions regarding that deposit? No? Okay, all right, Emily, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next I'm going to call on our CFO, Larry Lawrence, to review the proposals received for banking services.
Madam Mayor and Council, well, back on August 17th, we sent out a RFP, a request for proposals for banking services. And we had four bank, local banks respond by the deadline that we had set. And those, those banks were Ameris, Truist, Sanovis, and Colony Bank. My assistant, Lisa, and I combed through all four proposals, comparing different services they offered, and first we checked with the minimum requirements. All of them met, met the minimum requirements, and then we compared the different services. And they're all, give or take, pretty much the same services offered for all four banks. So basically, it come down to who could give us the best rate on our available funds. And three banks were very generous with their offer, but two of them came in at 80% of the federal funds rate, which is great. That's what I was looking for. And, but one of the deciding factors was also the funds that they wanted to reserve to pay for fees, and one of them had a less amount on that. So that was our current bank, Ameris. So happily, I was not looking forward to changing banks, but we would do it if we needed to. But Ameris came through with a very good rate for us on our available funds. So this is a recommendation to stay with Ameris and sign a three-year contract with an extension of two years, if we want to do that, with that 80% fund rate. And also, part two of this is we have a landfill trust fund with, I think, $8.3 million that Alan Mooney and Barnes over in Thomasville has been managing that for, I guess, 10 years now. But I'm not really satisfied with the way they're managing those funds, so we went out shopping that also. And Ameris was not interested. They just want our banking services, but Sanovis was.
Okay.
And Sanovis gave us a very good proposal. Their rate is also less than AMBs, and I think they'll do a better job.
Okay.
So there's two proposals. One, to stay with Ameris and sign a three-year contract, and then the other one is to change from AMB to Sanovis on the landfill trust fund.
Okay. And all of those details are in your packet, so you can, you can compare those apples and, to apples yourself, and, and see how those numbers shake out. You know, it's, it's, anytime that we can have an RFP where we're evaluating and, and doing everything we can to save money, I think it's beneficial. So this was certainly, I think, a good exercise, and that result is, is, is going to be a savings for our community. All right, any questions there concerning the RFPs?
I'll just comment with the landfill and AMB.
Sure.
That's, that's a useful handle, a pinch. Couple of years ago, we moved that to GMA, which was an excellent move, was returned. And the thought all along was, let that settle, and go ahead and see if we could move landfill and AMB to the local, and then go ahead and turn that.
Good. And you'll see in your packet, I do want to, want to reference this, there was a scoring of the scope of services. So, so those scores are what determine what's the best recommended company to go with, or bank to go with. So that's in your packet on page 25, and you can see that Ameris did score the highest when comparing items like interest on available funds, wire transfers, cost of banking services, collateral. And not to get too much into the weeds, but I know when you're managing government funds, it's a little different than if just you or I go down to the bank and open a checking account and, and what's given to us. So there's that whole governmental accounting that has to be adhered to by the bank as well as the government. So, so they, they have met all of the, the requirements, and like Larry said, and then Ameris did score the highest of those that submitted a proposal. So any other questions of Larry concerning that? Okay, thank you, Larry. I think that's got it. Thank you. All right, moving along, we're on item number seven on new business. That's the review of the zoning application that we just had the public hearing on. And Crystal, I know you presented, so I'll let you come back to the podium if anyone has any questions. It sounds pretty straightforward and pretty, pretty simple, but I want you available in case there are any questions or comments. So gentlemen, I'll open the floor for you to address, Crystal, if you have anything.
This is just moving some lines to no zoning?
That's right. Well, the original site plan, they planned for two buildings to be built there, one facing 20th Street and one facing the VA. This would be removing that from the plans and just incorporating the existing church into it, and then shifting that line over.
So those, that, the original, the, the existing church would have been removed?
That's right.
And then the new building, so?
That's right.
That's, okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, stay right there. We'll move on to item number eight, and that's the review of zoning application PP 22-0035 concerning amendments to the city's land development code concerning banquet or meeting halls and event centers. So I'll let you go ahead and address that. Oh, or wrong?
No, we're sorry.
Okay.
There's, you know, because of some time issues that we had, this is not, was not presented to the Plan and Zoning Commission, I mean, was presented to the Plan and Zoning Commission, but we're actually going to be holding the public hearing on this matter on October the 17th.
Okay.
That being the case, I wanted to go ahead and ask the conflict questions, make sure nobody has any conflict for discussion at this point. Again, this is application number PP 22-0035 concerning the amendments to the land development code related to banquet and meeting halls and event centers. Have any of the applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past few years?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed amendment to the land development code, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
And do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest in any real property that would be affected by the proposed amendment to the land development code?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you all. About two years ago, the city of Tipton passed an ordinance to allow for event centers in general business and commercial downtown zoning districts. The legislation that you have in front of you, the ordinance in front of you, would allow that this be expanded to allow for ticket sales. The original ordinance did not allow for ticket sales. The original ordinance was thought with weddings in mind, and quinceañeras, and birthday parties, and events that you typically don't charge people to come to. So this ordinance would allow for ticket sales. It would be regulated to a certain number per month. And the four existing private event centers that we have right now is Chino and Letty's Place at 102 West 3rd Street, The River Event Center at 115 17th Street, The Station at 101 Tiff Avenue South, and B&amp;L Event Center at 116 Poplar. Again, those are the existing event centers, private event centers. So of course, we have the UGA Event Center, and we have other government-owned event centers, but these are the four that are private. There can be more in the future, again, as long as they are general business or commercial downtown zoning. So that's just something to keep in mind when we are proposing ordinance changes. I could go through every line of the ordinance, but the gist of it is the being able to sell tickets, and then an application process for that. So we were calling these an inter, an event center entertainment permit, and they would get an app, application, they'd fill that out. We haven't decided if there'd be a fee or not. That'd be something that will come before you all in a later meeting. Right now, this is not on our fee schedule, so we can't charge a fee for it. But they would get an application, fill out everything, and if approved, they would be able to sell tickets to their events, and they would have to do this for every single event that they hold.
And then who, who authorizes that approval per event? Is that the council, or is that your office?
That would be city staff. We don't have it in the ordinance that it would have to go through council.
What's, what's the reason for limiting it to six events in a 30-day period? I mean, why do we, we're going to have them, why, why do we care? Why would we, stop. I mean, I, I don't understand that logic, but I should give you what reason.
I, I would think it would be in an event to not be a negatively contributing structure or place to existing neighborhoods, that if these events were only held six times a month instead of the potential for 30, 31 times a month, that it wouldn't be seen as a negative neighbor.
But they're in general business?
They're in general business and commercial downtown.
I think the, and I'm just guessing, Crystal, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the, the potential for disturbance might come more within commercial downtown because you have, as you know, businesses mixed with, with residences more in the commercial downtown than in the general business per se.
And, and...
But is that a fair statement?
Very fair statement. Some of these existing private event centers are neighboring parcels to residential parcels. Chino and Letty's has residents, you know, right there, next to them, and then The River Event Center also has residential properties in very near, not The River, sorry, B&amp;L Event Center on Poplar, has residential properties in the very near proximity.
And it has the, the station with apartments directly behind it and next door, so they all...
Exactly right.
They all really do have neighboring properties, but they're not all zoned commercial downtown. But, yeah.
So that was particularly made, because it was, it was definitely near a regular citizen home. So, so it wouldn't be a overbear. But... I mean, I hear you. I mean, that's why I put to not change zone. Somebody buys a house next to a general business location, and, okay, you'd be wrong with general business when they bought that house. You realize, like, lots of things can happen next door if it says general business.
Right.
You know, if you only live downtown, there's commercial development.
Trade-offs, yeah.
You know, telling what you're going to have, but it didn't, I didn't buy, and then next week, it changed on me. So I go, wait a minute, I wouldn't have done that. So I guess I'm for, I'm more free enterprise, if they want to have, you know, do it, but I mean, we've, we've had similar discussions before.
Yeah. I think the, personally, I think that the, the six is a good start, and let's see how it goes. And as you all know, our... And as you all know, our land development code is a document that we can change and amend to fit circumstances of the community and the needs of the community. So I think this is a good start to have the discussion and then we can make any adjustments.
It could be they only have one week.
Yeah.
So we could.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments, ideas concerning this amendment on the banquet, meeting halls, and event centers? Okay, good. Okay. All right. Crystal, stay where you are. The next item is concerning the amendment to the city's land development code, section 4.07.00. That's standards for planned development overlays or PDOs as we know them. So I'll let you take over for that.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a lot of zoning applications over the past two years come up with planned development overlays being the majority of those. When the site plans are approved, they are locked into that site plan, and many times, they end up needing to change that, and that's just a part of the development evolution. We've learned a lot along the way. We've seen some PDOs developed in a piecemeal approach where when the properties changed hands, the new owner did not know about the PDO that existed and sidewalks were not installed, or this was not installed, and it's just, we've learned a lot. And in that, we are seeking to make some changes to the planned development overlay ordinance. This would apply only to new PDOs. So this is not retroactive to the 12 that we have existing. This would be for all of the ones going forward. So the highlights of it is the approval process. So we are proposing a one-step and two-step approval process. So if you are a developer and you're thinking about applying for a PDO, you can do the two-step process and get a concept master plan approved first before expending very exorbitant amount of funds on traffic studies, engineering, wetlands mitigation, and all of that. You can get your concept approved first. So this is, hey, I'm looking to do multifamily apartments here on this parcel. I would like to see if the city council is supportive of this idea, if they think this is the highest and best use for this land, if this is the best use for the neighboring properties around it, and then I'll go forward with expending all of that money. So if they opt to go through the two-step process, they can expend very little funds to get the concept approved first and then go into, if they're approved, then they'll go into the traffic studies and the engineering and all of those fun items. That's the biggest change to the ordinance. And then also, there's a development agreement. So a development agreement would be required for all new PDOs. This would hold the developers to a timeframe, and this would be a timeframe proposed by the developer, not imposed by the city. So if the developer says, I'm wanting to do this, I want to build commercial on the front, single-family residential on the back, it's going to be blended beautifully with all of this landscaping and sign ordinances and all of these things, I'm going to do this in 24 months, then he's going to be, he or she would be held to that timeframe. The city is not the one proposing the timeframes. We don't understand what finances that they're working with or what environmental struggles that they might have to mitigate. So it is the developer themselves that would be proposing this timeline. However, they would be held to this timeline. So we wouldn't have PDOs that are sitting out there for years and years and decades and decades undeveloped and half-developed and roads that go to nowhere and things like that. So that was really the thought process behind implementing a development agreement, is so that we had something to kind of keep the developers' feet to the fire. Couple more changes. We have amendments or modifications to approved PDO. So we've separated this into major and minor amendments. So little changes, those can come through staff, and we don't have to have the developer go through the process of going before council very frequently, a couple times a year, you know, that can be a bit much. So these are limited to landscaping materials, exterior features, signage, fencing, all of the non-major items. Major amendments, site plan changes, all of those would still have to come before council. And lastly, we've laid out a process for rescinding PDOs. So if the PDO, no construction has started within the timeframe laid out in the development agreement, the PDO would be rescinded and the zoning would revert back to its original zoning prior to the PDO.
Okay. Lot of information.
I've got a couple, as you know, Crystal, at least two that have given us a little bit of problem. One is the length of time that it's just been sitting there. The other one is, you know, came to you several times, spent lots of time with that. But is there any guideline that the developer said, well, I need eight years to do this, or I need, you know, are we going to, or what happens if he needs two or he or she needs two and then comes about and says, wait a minute, I need a couple more? What do we do with that?
You would take that into consideration. The proposal of the development agreement would be presented to council before you gave that second step approval. So you would have the timeline before you said, yes, we're going to do this PDO, or no, we're not approving this PDO. You would have that timeline in front of you. And then if they don't adhere to that timeline, that's more of a legal question, but I believe we'd have some legal remedies that we could seek.
That's the last thing. There's no things wrong to get the lawyers involved. We don't win at that. But I also want to be consistent. I hate that you get that subjectivity of, well, we agreed to let this one go. And so I don't know the answer, other than if we can set the time, say, you will have three years, and if you can't do that, then tell us.
I believe, in my opinion, it kind of lets us off the hook a little bit when you have the developers propose their own timeline, that they should have had these things in mind themselves. So if they have wetlands on their property, then they should have called a wetlands consultant and realized that that's going to take 13 months to mitigate that before you can even get into permitting. That's just where it goes into their due diligence in that second step approach to really dig down. And when you're getting those, or the engineering and the environmentals and all of those things done, you're really looking at that realistic timeframe. But if you push it off on the developer to come up with that timeframe, they've chosen to get it done in two years or three years. And if they say, I want to get it done in 12 years, maybe take that into consideration with approval or not approval. But the thing is, and I don't think I mentioned this earlier, but the biggest salient point is that the times change, the economy changes, the development around these planned development overlays, they change. And so what was good for the city of Tifton back in 2009 may not be so great for the city of Tifton in 2022. And so when we have these PDOs lingering out there for years and decades, things change, and city council may not get a say in whether these planned development overlays get built even because they were approved 20 years ago or 15 years ago. So this kind of would stop that problem going forward, is that it would give it a definitive timeline.
So there's nothing we can do, Rob, with these that are already in existence? It might have been out there for 10 or 12 years and they're doing nothing?
We're looking into that.
Okay. And PDOs in and of themselves are a good development tool. They offer some creativity. They offer a site that I think people really graduate to. We have some successful PDOs where you've got mixed use of applications of the property. You may have a little bit of commercial with some residential, with some multifamily, with some larger, with some smaller, and people like that. So it does give that flexibility and creativity to benefit the developer, which will ultimately benefit the community. But there does have to be some framework that we work within, and so that's what is being proposed. So good questions, Jack. Any other questions of Crystal as we mull this over and consider this?
I will make one comment.
Sure.
You know, a lot of the things that we'll be addressing will be in the developmental contract, which will hopefully, you know, keep things on track and keep the contractor and the developer moving. We've had issues with people not putting in sidewalks when they said they will put in sidewalks. So I think the contracts, the concept, is going to help us get those things enforced in a timely manner.
Well, as long as both parties, both city, staff, and developer are all on the same page, it sure does make everybody's job easier, does it not? Okay. Any other questions of Crystal? All right. Thank you for those comments, Rob. All right. Thank you, Crystal, for that work. Thank you to your department for that work. All right. I'm going to call Mr. Jeff West. We're going to discuss resolution approving the amended agreement with ESG operations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Every year, we come before you with this. This is some administrative updates to our contract, and we do amendments every year. One of the big things is we change the fees in it to match the city budget every year. Second thing, after working with Pete and Emily in a great length, we looked at several things that we thought needed to be updated. One of them was the building maintenance. We've taken care of building maintenance since 2014, and there really wasn't anything in the contract that clarified that. So we added a few lines of building maintenance. We updated the, like I said, the scope of fees. Appendix B, that list of buildings we maintain and the vehicles, we updated that, and we're going to update the vehicles every year because that changes from year to year to make sure we've got the current list, and that helps with other things. The other change in there is y'all all know that back in October, we merged with Infomark and to become a stronger company. With this, this is a assignment that goes with that to give us the benefits of being a larger company. We still will be doing business as ESG. Dan Grossell is the CEO of the whole company now. We'll have, instead of a pool of 700 people that we've had before, we bring a lot of people that y'all don't see here to help do different things. We had 700 people. Now we have 1,800 people that we can pull from when we need special needs. So if there's any question on it, I'm glad to answer.
Okay. Gentlemen?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Let me clarify. That's 700 people with the ESG, not 700 people with the city of Tifton.
That's right.
So I just want to make sure that there's no confusion there. Okay, you're welcome. All right. That concludes all of the items on our agenda for the workshop. So unless there's any other business to come before the council on the workshop, I am going to close that meeting. So the workshop meeting is now closed, so we're adjourned there, but we will now call to order our special called meeting. And you can see on your agenda, we have three specific items that we'll be voting on in this special called meeting and then go into our manager's report and mayor and council comments. So the first item in our special called meeting is the resolution authorizing the execution of the low-income household water assistance program agreement. That's a mouthful. And we just heard about that program, and it sounds like the council is supportive of that. So I will take a motion concerning the resolution authorizing that.
I'm motioning.
I was hoping you would do that. All right. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations, Ms. Carla. Thank you. Thank you very much for this. This is going to be a good partnership. The next item is a resolution to establish water and sewer rates for residential properties. So I'm going to call on Pete and Rob to present that information to us.
Mayor and Council, I'll start.
The longer one with the yellow lines, which really is very confusing, is Exhibit B. So let's reference Exhibit A as the rates that we'll be using, which does equalize everything, which was our intent.
I'm going to approve Exhibit A.
Okay, so we have motion.
January 1st, 2023, for to give billing time to straighten down without cost.
Okay. So we have a motion, and then we have a second. Okay. Any further discussion?
Hmm.
All right. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on our agenda is a resolution authorizing continuation of the current lost, which is local option sales tax allocation and distribution. So Pete and Rob, you want to talk about that?
Maybe I'll take this.
You want to take this? Okay.
Mayor and Council, as you know, that we've been involved with the county in the local option sales tax negotiations that's required by law every 10 years. At the juncture when negotiations first started out, the county had made a proposal to the city to increase their share of distribution to about 72% and reducing the cities of Tifton, TaiTai, and Omega to 27%. As y'all recall, I think it was on June the 25th, we called a joint meeting between the city of Tifton, TaiTai, and the county. And at that meeting, I think only the city council was present. And at that time, I gave a presentation to city council and the members of the public regarding the city's contentions as far as lost negotiations and lost allocations. During that meeting, I went through the seven criteria that were set forth in the state law regarding what things you should look at to determine what's a fair and reasonable allocation. I'm not going to go through all that criteria that we went, you know, back in June. But I want to just to point out again, the percentages that are currently in place from our last lost negotiations 10 years ago was Tiff County was 61.98%. The city of Tifton was 33.33%. Omega was 3.05%, and TaiTai is 1.64%. And that's what we are currently operating under. Under the current lost allocations, Tiff County in 2021 received $6,962,364. The city of Tifton received $3,744 and $39. Omega was $320,114, and TaiTai was $172,537.
Ra.
Yes.
What was the city of Tifton's receipt in dollars? I think you said thousand, and I think that was.
Three million.
Thank you.
$744,039.
Okay.
There's been a lot of conversations about loss and the importance of loss. Naturally, loss proceeds that we get, you know, from sales revenues is something that is used to roll back your taxes, both your county taxes and your city taxes. So if you're, your county taxes would be reduced greatly by the 6.9 million as well as the city of Tifton. So we've all recognized, I think both the city and the county recognize the importance of lost and the effect that, you know, it could have if you lose that, which we would lose that at the end of December if we're able to reach an agreement. The problem naturally of losing loss is that you lose that revenue and you have to make up that revenue somehow, and oftentimes, that might have to come from a millage increase or it might have to, you know, come from a reduction in services. So it's very important that we try to keep this in place. Now, when the city received the proposal from the county of 72%, and I gave my presentation back on June the 25th, we went through the criteria as far as what we believe the city was, would be entitled to based upon analysis and the data that we had available to us. Some of the things that, you know, we felt that were important to look at naturally is population. The population of Tiff County was 54%. City of Tifton is about 41%. One of the biggest criteria that we were looking at was what we call daytime population. And daytime population is something that you take into consideration because you're looking at what services your governmental entity has to provide for a certain population. Daytime population for the city of Tifton was about 58, really 59%. What that means is, is that during the daytime, when people come into the Tifton to either work or go to school or go grocery shopping, the city's responsible to take care of those folks with their services, be it police protection, fire protection, garbage, whatever the case may be. So that's an important factor that we took into consideration looking what we thought was a fair allocation. One of the other big items that we look at is, you know, the inherent value of your central business district. And of course, Tifton really is the central business district in the county. And we start looking at what the inherent value of your central business district is, you're looking at things like your commercial digest. You know, what does this commercial business district bring to the county and to surrounding areas? Tifton has a pull factor that is very, very good. We draw people from all over the surrounding counties to come in here and shop and buy things. As a segue into that idea, naturally, you're looking at where are these sales tax dollars being generated? We, you know, looking at data, you can look and see about 82, 83% of sales occur here in the city of Tifton. So looking at those types of criteria, and again, I'm not going to go and reiterate everything I did back I did back in June, but when we crunched those numbers, looked at the percentages, the City of Tifton felt that 65 percent of the lost proceeds should be attributable to the city, based upon the criteria and the percentages that we calculated. Recognizing that that would be a large jump in the current allocation, the City of Tifton authorized a 49 percent allocation to the City of Tifton. What happened after that proposal was made? The county initiated mediation, which is the next step in the process of trying to negotiate a lost agreement. We did participate in mediation on the 26th and 27th of this month, this last week.
September.
Right. So we went through that process, and I firmly believe that both sides went into those negotiation process in good faith, with the hopes of trying to resolve the lost issue. Unfortunately, we were not able to resolve it through the mediation process. That doesn't mean that the discussions are ended. Hopefully, there will be an opportunity to have further discussions with the county. But as we left the mediation on the 27th, the city had made the proposal to leave things as they are, the current distribution. It was felt that leaving things as they were would maintain the revenues, both the cities and the county, to provide the services, and also would not affect any of the taxpayers as far as a tax increase. At this point, we have not resolved that issue. So what I would like to do is, we have drafted a resolution on behalf of the city that I'd just like to read to the record. This is a resolution to establish the distribution of the revenues from the local option sales tax among the cities of Tifton, Ti-Ti, and Omega, and Tifton County, Georgia, and authorize the execution of the certificate of distribution to the commissioner of the Georgia Department of Revenue. Witnesseth, whereas the City of Tifton, Georgia is a municipal corporation duly organized and existing under the laws of the state of Georgia, and is charged with providing certain public services to local residents. And whereas Georgia law requires that after each decennial census, the allocation of the proceeds from local option sales tax between the county and qualifying municipalities be renegotiated under the provisions of OCGA Section 48-8-89. And whereas Tifton County made a proposal to increase its share of the lost proceeds from its current distribution of 61.98 percent to 72.17 percent, and a decrease in allocation to the cities of Tifton, Ti-Ti, and Omega to 27.83 percent. And whereas the City of Tifton subsequently proposed a lost allocation increase from its current allocation of 33.33 percent to 49 percent, an allocation of the county of 45.4 percent, and allocations to the cities of Ti-Ti of 2.5 percent, and the City of Omega of 3.1 percent. And whereas the City of Tifton and Tifton County failed to reach an agreement between them on the allocation of the lost proceeds. And whereas Georgia law provides that if the county and qualifying municipalities fail to reach an agreement in the renegotiation process, the parties are required to participate in an alternative dispute resolution process in an attempt to reach an agreement. And whereas Tifton County, the City of Tifton, participated in the mandatory mediation process on September 26th and 27th, 2022, and failed to reach a compromise settlement of the lost allocation through the mediation process. And whereas the failure to reach an agreement on the allocation of loss will result in the discontinuation of lost revenues to Tifton County and the cities of Tifton, Omega, and Ti-Ti on December 30, 2022. And whereas the mayor and city council understand the discontinuation of lost revenues to pay for governmental services provided by the cities and the counties will have a devastating effect on the citizens of Tifton, Omega, Ti-Ti, and Tifton County due to significant increase in property taxes that will be required to make up for the loss of the lost revenues. Whereas, in recognition of the need that lost remain in place for the benefit of all city and county taxpayers, it is the desire of the mayor and city council that the allocation of lost proceeds remain as they are, with no change in current allocation, which will ensure that the municipalities and Tifton County can continue the level of services being provided to its citizens without any changes in its revenue sources to provide these services, and will prevent any tax increase to its residents. Therefore, it is now resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Tifton, Georgia as follows. The recitals are incorporated herein. Allocation of lost proceeds. The City of Tifton resolves that the distribution of lost proceeds remain as they are currently and as they have been for the past 20 years as follows. Tifton County, 61.98 percent. Tifton, 33.33 percent. Omega, 3.05 percent. Ti-Ti, 1.64 percent. Authorization directed to the clerk. The mayor and council authorize the mayor to sign the required certificate or other documents necessary to submit the above lost revenue distribution to the commissioner of the Georgia Department of Revenue. In addition, the mayor and council direct this resolution be transmitted by the city clerk to Tifton County and the cities of Omega and Ti-Ti and Stantor for their agreement and approval. Any resolutions inconsistent with this resolution would be of no effect. The effective date of this resolution would be effective immediately.
Governor?
Couple of comments. One, and it's in there about for 20 years, and just to tell people to understand, 10 years ago, the council at that time did not agree that 33 percent was fair. But at the 11th hour, the Georgia Supreme Court ruled that the way to settle this in arbitration was unconstitutional. So it was a situation of either agree, or the whole thing goes away then. And so the city council said, okay, we'll take the 33 better than nothing. The Supreme Court calls that. I wasn't in favor of 33, still not in favor of 33, if you consider what Rob has pointed out and what the city should get, and the burden that's on the packs of the City of Tifton taxpayers when it comes to this population, daytime population, whether the revenue is generated, whether it be garbage, whether it be police protection, fire protection, street, none of that's provided by the county. None, zip. So we have to take our 33 percent and provide all of that. But 33 is better than nothing, so I'm in favor of this because I will compromise and say we'll take the 33. We'll figure out how to make that continue to work and provide the services for all these people that come into Tifton to shop. And that's right on city streets.
And Jack, I'm glad you brought up that issue about what happened 10 years ago. What's important for people to understand is that back 10 years ago, when the, prior to the lost statute being held unconstitutional, is that if the cities and the counties disagreed, and they were unable to reach an agreement through either arbitration or mediation, the parties had the right to go to court and have a judge decide those allocations. When the Supreme Court ruled that portion of the statute unconstitutional, whereby a judge could make that decision, that left no arbiter, no ultimate arbiter that could decide the issue, which means that because you cannot go to court and get a judge to decide the issue, if you don't reach an agreement between the parties, there is no agreement, and you have no ability to go to a judge or a neutral and have them establish that allocation. So that is what's unusual in this situation, is that both parties have to come to an agreement. Both parties have to agree to this allocation, and the failure to do so means you lose those revenues. And what I think is important at this point is that rather than people taking a stand on, I want more, if the council is in agreement, and I think you are, to leave it as it is, as it has been, then of course you maintain those revenues, you can continue to provide the services to your citizens, and you don't have to raise taxes on your citizens. And I think that's the bottom line.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for Rob?
Well, the question that I have is because I'm a new councilman, and all of this is really overwhelming for someone new. For as far as this resolution, I want to be clear, is this stating that there is no more negotiation, that this is our stand, and that's it? Or is that what this is saying?
Basically, this resolution is presenting to the county, the cities of Ti-Ti and Omega, that the City of Tifton wants to maintain the current allocation of the lost. The fact that mediation was unsuccessful on the 26th and 27th doesn't mean that discussions end. Certainly, if the county receives this resolution and they don't agree with it, that doesn't mean that discussions stop. There's always room for, there's always time to talk, and we have until the end of December to come to an agreement, but certainly, this I think is a good step forward for everybody.
Rob, would it be fair to say, just to add to your comments, that what we're saying in this resolution is we won't ask for any more, and you have our commitment to that? So 33.33 percent is the maximum that we would expect should loss be renewed? Is that a fair statement?
That's right. Again...
So we're not going to come back and ask for 50 percent or something later?
Right. This is just saying that we are in agreement to maintain the status quo and keep the percentages and allocations as they have been.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Because it is very confusing, and there's a lot of information out there, and a lot of misinformation that's out there, a lot of rumor and insinuation and innuendo. So this approval, if we approve this resolution tonight, which like you said, I think we will, it's to send the message to the Board of Commissioners that we will not ask for any additional, but we will try to continue to negotiate and have conversations and work together for resolution of the approval of lost. But as it relates to the percentage number, we'll accept the 33.33 percent and not ask for any more.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? No?
I move to approve the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Josh. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that does carry. All right, now we are at our city manager report. Pete, what you got?
I don't have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. All right, mayor and council comments. I do want to let the council know that on October, the 11th, 12th, somewhere in that area, the gentleman that we are wanting to meet as a potential interim will be in the community. He wants to meet with, this is Mr. Mike Stewart, he wants to meet with us, as well as several people within the community. So if there's anyone in particular that you would like for him to meet, such as potentially our school board, or industry leaders, whatever, let me know so that we can make sure and coordinate those appointments, so that we allow him to cover as much ground, and we can have as much conversation about that. So just wanted to remind you, make you aware of that.
What day was that?
It's October the 10th and 11th, I believe. So he's going to be here for a couple of days, so we'll send him running in 100 different directions to meet with lots of different people. All right, does anyone want to go first on mayor and council comments? Any? I'd like to go last, if you all go first.
I'll go first.
Okay, thank you.
Can I probably move on?
Please.
There's lots to talk about, lost, and it's all over, and discussion about the water and sewer system, and authority, and this kind of thing. And so I just have a few points, basically some facts. Read from this document. City water plant completed and turned over to the council for final test this week. Capacity of the pump is 1 million gallons of water per day, a fine and modern outfit. Would anybody like to guess what date that was? May 10th, 1907. Say that again. May 10th, 1907. Tifton bonds sold, issued the complete waterworks, and installed a sewage system for Tifton. We have an upcoming game where I can take it. February 14th, 1908. February 14th, 1908. That's how long the city of Tifton has been operating a water and sewer system. We went into an agreement. We talked about the 1987 agreement, where we were selling water to the county operating on. Everybody had water, got water. We get up to 2005, and the city council decided at that point, we're going to enter local agreement with the county. The county was struggling. They came into this system that obviously we'd been operating since '07 and '08. This is 2005, with a tank and three wells or something, and the wells were falling in, EPD was on this kind of stuff. And we use some joint funds, some joint SPOS funds, to improve the system, expand it outside of the city members. Well, and we had a contract, and the contract, it's important. The city council decided, I think it was 2017, 2018, I forget exactly, that we decided that we wanted to end the contract, which is what it says in the contract. Any party, either party can end this contract with a year's notice. So we gave notice. The only question then for Con, how do you separate the assets? How do you divide them? Well, and I think it was our system, and we started over that way. But it would be fair, and we will offer to the county, we will pay them for what SPOS funds were done, dollar for dollar. I'm not talking about depreciating value, I'm talking about dollar for dollar, from money we put in from '05 to the present. And we would then go back, it says in the contract, legal contract, binding contract, Dutch sentence contract, to the 1987 agreement, sell water like we've done, continue the water flowing. And the county said, they insist, the city give up their water system that we owned for over 100 years, and put it into a water park. Nothing in that contract said anything about, you have to, don't do this, you got to put it into a water park. The City of Tifton does not want to give up its main asset, its water and sewer system that we had over 100 years and go into a water park. And we will not be held, we will not hold lost hostage to do that. The idea that we're giving the $12, $13 million, which is the money they say they want, we'll be glad to do that. Got lots of calls, but I want to clarify something else. This lawsuit, the city of Tifton did not sue Tifton County first. We went to a judge and said, Judge, here's the contract. We know we can end it, it says it, but we need help highly going to separate these assets. So we asked for what they call a declaratory judgment. That is not a lawsuit. County followed up with suing us for $22 million, some uncounted number. So I keep hearing phone call, after phone call, after phone call, you can end this, they'll drop this lawsuit, and y'all just flip this into a water park. Well, excuse me, they file a lawsuit. If they want to end the lawsuit, all they have to do is go to court and say, done. That's all they have to do. If they're not in hold over our heads, give up an asset that we had over 100 years. years. The, the last thing I'll say, and it's a, it's a, it is a personal one for me. It, it talks about the county claiming that the city robbed funds. Well, I'm here to say that. I own finance community and have been, and a lot of you don't, don't know my background. But I spent 30 years in corporate America. The majority of it in the financial arena. Moving highs to vice president of finance of my company. So I know a little bit about those kind of things. The idea that, and I'll say aye, part of the council would rob funds is just despicable to me. Able to say we're robbing funds because of the way we allocate indirect costs. Most of you don't get to know about indirect costs. Well, I've had lots of years of experience with allocating indirect costs. And I had more auditors audit me in 30 years than I'd even believed. And every once before, we told you, you can't do that. It was that private industry, yeah, but allocating is allocating. The thing the auditors always told me was, be consistent. Don't go changing your method this way and then changing that. One thing we've done, we've been consistent. You're allocating these indirect costs the same way prior to this interlocal agreement in 2005 and after. So we had our experts and other head thinkers look at it. And I said, there, there is nothing wrong with being consistent. The idea that they were accused of robbing funds, it's just, it's, it's a personal attack as far as I'm concerned. I am tamed to be questioned. And I'm tired of that. But bottom line, we, we will, we will not be forced to do something just because they want the control of our system we've had since early 1900s. That's not right for the citizens of Tifton. And they are entitled to that. We will continue to provide water and sewer services to those academy. We will install meavers for that outside, that's outside the service area. We have a large service area, but we can provide it countywide, as they said, utility. But that's our decision. We would never go in and hold, hold up something that's important, that's lost, hostage to some whim that they, that they want. Have community leaders call me, call the mayor, call everybody here, provide threats, if you will, not bodily harm, but other threats, if you can imagine what those are. And there's no, there's no reason for it. We'll accept the thirty-three point thirty-two percent, which is every citizen of Tifton should be outraged at it, if you realize what the county did not provide for you inside the city limits, yet you paid the same taxes. So enough is enough. Let's settle lost. Forget this, whatever you're trying to do, trying to control, take control of an asset that is the city of Tifton and has been the city of Tifton for over a hundred years. It's not right.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody like to comment next? No? Josh, anything? Okay. Well, I'll wrap things up. We received a letter a few days ago from the county, and evidently all of you did too. I'm not sure why it went out to everybody, but I guess it did. That's fine. Requesting that the city, like Jack said, put our water system in an authority and equalize rates and accept no more than thirty-three point three-three percent of lost. Tonight, you've seen us basically give them everything that they have asked for. We have compromised and we have bent and we have offered to them. We will not stop providing water to anybody in this community that wants water. We never said we would stop providing water. If you go back to 2017, when we decided we wanted to divorce from the county as far as the management agreement is concerned, and we've got reasons for that, and I'll, I'll get into that in just a second. We said, we will continue, we'll revert back to the original agreement that says water will still flow through the system. The original agreement allowed for us to put meters along the boundaries. And then the, the county could provide, or could purchase bulk water from this system to distribute out into the, into the far areas of the county, if that's what they chose to do. Most people out in those areas actually have well inceptics, so. But if someone wanted to be on the water system, they could purchase that water. We also confirmed that with the Environmental Protection Division. We also made that commitment to the judge when we went for a summary judgment, that water, and we, we've confirmed it in numerous conversations and, and documents since, that water will continue to flow to any, quality water, to anybody that wants water. You have access to water. The county wanted the rates equalized. You just heard, they're equalized. It doesn't matter where you live. And I used the example a few minutes ago. I can't remember the numbers I used, but if you live at 123 Main Street, or 123 19th Street, or 23rd Street, doesn't matter, your rate's the same. It's equalized. It's a compromise that we're willing to offer. We'll accept thirty-three percent. It's a compromise. The county has compromised zero. They have asked us to settle this lawsuit, but I want to pose some questions to you. And I'm going to talk to you now, just Julie, to you. And every one of you in this room I know, and I consider you friends and neighbors, so that's why I'm going to talk to you. And I want you to ask me questions and I want you to hold me accountable. Because this is not Julie's water system, or Lester's, or Josh's, or Jack's, or MJ's. It's yours, city of Tifton. The local option sales tax can only be extended by Tifton County Board of Commissioners. We don't have a say-so in that. But they're extorting us, and I use that word very carefully. My city attorney doesn't like it, but that's what it is, when someone says, you either do this or you won't get that. Why would they want to settle this lawsuit? I want to, I want to throw some ideas out to you. I want to, I want you to travel back in time with me. When Wes Saylor's was on this council, and he was the vice mayor, and we had a joint fire department, an incredible joint fire department that all of the citizens of Tifton benefited from. We had low ISO rating. We had a program in place that allowed for the city manager and the county manager to work together to create budgets and to oversee that department. It was an interlocal governmental agreement. So it was defined who would do what, how things would be managed, and just kind of a rulebook, if you will. The county decided at that point in time that they wanted the fire department, and they came to us using these same tactics where they said, you either give us the fire department or by God, we're going to come after you and you will pay. There will be hell to pay. You know who made that statement? Your county administrator, Mr. Jim Carter, who is not, my friends, a member of this community. Mr. Carter doesn't go to church here. He doesn't have school, children in our school system. He doesn't shop here. He doesn't lay his head down in Tifton County at night when he goes to bed. He's calling all the shops. And I'm fixing to point out to you, don't take my word for it. In a few minutes, I'm going to pass some documents out to you and I'm going to show you. This is a pattern of Mr. Carter. You give us that fire department. Wes Saylor's and I went and pleaded, please, let's work together. Having one fire department is beneficial to everybody in this community. You know what they said? No. You give it to us or we'll come after you and there'll be hell to pay. Let's work together. No. Just like we're going through right now with lost and this crazy water authority idea. Let's work together. No. We're not going to do that. Then a few years later, it's time for special purpose local option sales tax, SPOLOST. Now, the difference between lost and SPOLOST, in our alphabet soup of acronyms we have in government, is special purpose local option sales tax is just that. It's for a special purpose. And you, the citizens, the voters of Tifton County, have to approve the, the SPOLOST list. And it's usually somewhat, it's not real specific in that we're not going to say, for example, if the idea that the city of Tifton wants X amount of dollars from SPOLOST to paint this room, that's being a little silly, but I'm trying to, to make it understandable because this is also confusing. We're not going to go in and say, we're going to paint the room purple. You would say, yeah, you can paint the room. We don't care what color you paint it, but you know that money is going to be spent to paint this room. We don't get so specific that we get into great details. But SPOLOST is approved in generalities. For example, parks and recreation. It doesn't say that this ball field is going to be sited, or that pool's going to be repaired. It just parks and recreation. You know what parks is. And then the government has the ability, based on what's going on in the community at that time, to allocate money to parks and recreation for whatever it is that's needed. With counties, we're not going to renew SPOLOST. Y'all remember that conversation? I do. We had, please renew SPOLOST. Please. Again, the majority of SPOLOST and lost dollars are paid by people who come into this town to shop, dine, go to school, go to the doctor, attend a festival, whatever they're doing. So not only are we the county hub for Tifton County, but we're the hub for the region. Because people from Fitzgerald, Nocilla, and Alapahaw, and all these other places come into our town and enjoy the benefits that we have in Tifton. Shop at many of your businesses. Dine in many of your restaurants. Enjoy many of the special activities that we offer. And that's great. They're paying for that. Reduces your property tax. That's huge when it's, when it relates to lost. Pays for special programs within our community when it refers to SPOLOST. Well, we had a lot of fighting and a lot of pressure back then. We're not going to renew SPOLOST, said the county. Well, they ultimately did, and you voted on it, and so off we go. We've given everything that they've asked for. They'll have, you'll have, anybody will have water, sewer, whatever you need. We equalize the rates. We'll take the current distribution of lost, even though we feel like we, we deserve more, but we'll compromise and accept what we, what we have. Okay. We've talked about the fire department. Remember that. There's a fire department now, city of Tifton Fire Department, ISO rating. If you live within the city, ISO rating, and I've got my fire chief back here, is around two. Is that correct, chief? Two. It's like golf. The lower, the better. If you live in the unincorporated area, your ISO rating is either a four or a 10. The four is if you live within a thousand feet of a hydrant and you're within, how far? Five miles of a fire station. If you don't meet those criteria, your ISO rating is a 10. Tifton is a two. Yours is a 10. You're also paying for that fire department through a special district. Because the city of Tifton residents pay for the Tifton Fire Department, you're paying a higher tax because you have to pay for that in the unincorporated area. But where it hurts even more is your insurance. You're getting robbed twice, to use their terms. So think about that with that fire department. And you're asking us to turn our water system over to those same people who, who did that to our fire department? Was that in the best interest of the citizens of all of Tifton County? Absolutely not. I don't care who you are. You can't do that math. You can't. So why do they want to settle this lawsuit so quickly? I've got my opinion, and I'm going to share that with you. I want to share with you an email that we received on Saturday, Saturday afternoon. Came from Hank Pittman. He is one of the county's attorneys. I want you to just listen to the tone of this email. And this is what we're dealing with. And y'all need to know that this is what your tax, my tax dollars as a city resident and, because I pay county taxes like every one of you in this room, is paying for this. Okay? The county's last offer is by far the best possible resolution of this dispute for both parties, especially the city. It solves the problems of the city improperly depleting water and sewer fund. We have not improperly depleted anything. They don't like the fact that the people that sit out front in the city hall, the customer service people, who help you turn your water on, or turn your water off, or take your bill, they shouldn't be paid from the water fund. Well, yeah, they should, because that's what their job is. That's what they call depleting. But I'm not going to get into the, if you want to talk to me about that later, we can talk about that later. So anyway, city improperly depleting the water and sewer fund, favoring city water and sewer projects over county projects. Provides the city with a continued source of income for 13 years. Provides SPOLOST funding for a new water authority. Provides a compromise resolution to the lost distribution. We the ones that compromise, not them. And establishes a financial viable water and sewer authority that will provide services at equalized rates to all citizens. Ladies and gentlemen, we just equalized the rates. You don't need an authority to do that. We just did it. This is the part that really got me. I hope the city realizes how much the county is giving up. The county is not receiving any compensation for its damages and the funds the city robbed from the water sewer and solid waste funds, and we're not seeking attorney's fees. We're just going to settle this and the lawsuit goes away. Now, those are my words. Those aren't his words. That last sentence was mine. I hope you will stress to the city, the county's offer is a great deal for them, and our board, here we go, our board is serious about going to a host if this lawsuit is not settled. Also, this is what doesn't make sense to me. Also, I hope you can stress to them that our claims have teeth and we can easily obtain a 26 to 30 million dollar judgment against the city of Tifton. Now, why would you want to settle in one hand if you could get 26 to 30 million dollars in the other hand? If you're so stinking confident that you're going to win this lawsuit against your own citizens? Why would you want to settle? If I were going to Las Vegas and somebody said, if you go over there and play that and you use these cards, you're going to win a million dollars, but hey, don't do that. Go over here and play that slot machine and walk out with a hundred bucks. Why would I want to do that? But more importantly, why would I want to attack my citizens by threatening not to renew lost and claiming that I, we are confident that we can win a 26 to 30 million dollar judgment? Let's get before the courts and let them figure that out. But they don't want to. We can all, now let me go back to his email. We can also ask that the court order the water and sewer system sold since the division of the equipment and infrastructure is impractical. Can they do that? No. They can't do that. But let's go back and talk about why they want to settle that lawsuit. Remember, I talked about Mr. Carter just a second ago, that gentleman who's making every decision and is not a member of this community? These five gentlemen and I spent two days, well, Jack and I spent two days and the rest of them spent a day, in mediation. On Monday afternoon, Jack and I asked the commissioners if we could meet with them without the managers and without the attorneys. And they said, sure. So we called in our fellow council members and we all met on, on Tuesday morning. These gentlemen asked amazingly good questions and offered amazingly good dialogue. The venom and hatred in that room was palpable. At every question, though, and this is what you need to hear, at every question that these gentlemen asked, the answer was, you need to come talk to Mr. Carter and let him explain it. One of these gentlemen said, well, we're here now. Let's talk about it now. No, 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 no. You need to come and let Mr. "No, no, 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 you need to come and let Mr. Carter explain it." "Okay, well, why can't we talk about it now?" "Because Mr. Carter can explain it." Mr. Carter does not have a vote. Mr. Carter doesn't even live here. Mr. Carter doesn't have any investment in this community like all of you do. And he is controlling the shots. And he did it with the fire department, and he's doing it with this, trying to steal this water department. He did it with SPOLOST, he's done it over and over and over again. I want to pass something out to you, if you'd like a copy. Because I'm going to read some things from a summary judgment. And I want each of you to have a copy of it so that you can follow along with me. I'm going to come down there so I can, are you going to pass them out?
Whoever wants a copy, I'll have it.
Raise your hand if you'd like a copy of what I'm fixing to give to you, because this is public information and it's important.
Do I have a copy of this?
Yeah. This is public information, I'm not sharing anything. They keep wanting, go back to this lawsuit. If they had not kept, if they didn't keep wanting to go back to this lawsuit, I would not talk to you about this this evening. But you need to understand why they want to settle this lawsuit. Rather than hold out and go to court and get their $26 to $30 million from you, Tiff County residents. Give you a second to get those passed out. All right. Are those highlighted, Pete?
They're copies, I guess.
Okay. You'll see on the front page that this is from the Superior Court of Tiff County. And in the kind of halfway down through the page, and the title that's under, oops, you see partial summary judgment, okay? And Rob, feel free to interrupt me if I don't use the correct legal terms, because I'm not a lawyer, so let's go through that. If you will, and the pages are numbered down at the bottom. If you will turn to page two in your document. And I want you to look at item number four. It says, "Tiff County breached the 2006 SPOLOST IGA's intergovernmental agreement and state law by co-mingling its SPOLOST funds with other funds of the county." You see that? That's serious. I want you to go down to the bottom of the page, number eight. "Tiff County breached the 2008 Service Delivery Strategy Agreement, or SDS agreement, by using county general and SPOLOST funds to stand up its own fire department." Turn over a couple of pages to page seven. Look down at the bottom, line number, our section, paragraph number 27. "12,250,000 dollars was designated for the following Tiff County projects." And you can read the projects, I won't go through and read all of those right here, right now. But you can see that there was SPOLOST money that was set aside for projects. Turn over to page 10. Now, we're getting into the deposition of Mr. Carter, who is not a member of this community, but is calling all the shots. Read section number 37 along with me. Or paragraph 37. "On June the 24th, 2015, the county provided the city with, quote, 'Notice that the county exercises its contractual right to no longer participate in a joint fire service with the city of Tifton effective July 1st, 2016.'" They decided they wanted to separate, they wanted a divorce. They can do it. We can't. They can do it. That's what they did. So, they noticed us. You can see through the other highlighted, I just want to read to you and read into the record the most important points. But you can take this home and read, it's a lot of reading. Turn over to page 13 and look at paragraph 57. "The December 28, 2010 joint meeting minutes show that, quote, 'Mr. Carter provided a list of proposed projects to everyone, including roads and bridges, senior center improvements, improvements to city hall, technology, EMS, fire, water, sewer, recreation improvements, recreation improvements to the administration building, finance, software, jail, Tai Tai, and Omega, as well as economic development.'" All right. Now, turn over to page 14. About halfway down the page on your highlighted there, you'll see recreation allocated at $4,500,000. This was in 2010. We all know what recreation, parks and recre, that's for the youth of our community, right? And you can see some items listed there. And I know if this is going to make sense in a minute, so just hang with me. Turn over to page 22. Paragraph 101. "County manager Jim Carter admitted that in 2011, the county could not have been contemplating expenditures relating to a new county fire department." That came out of his deposition. Then look down at the bottom of that same page, 22, section 104. "A county fire department was never presented to the cities or the voters under the list of public safety projects presented to the parties during preliminary negotiations." In other words, citizens who voted, you didn't know you were going to be paying for a fire department. You weren't asked to pay for a fire department. Hang with me, I'm almost done. Turn to page 23 and look at paragraph 107. "In his July 17, 2015 memorandum to the Tiff County Board of Commissioners, county manager Jim Carter wrote, quote, 'The leasing of the fire trucks and purchase of all equipment necessary for the county to stand up a fire suppression service has to be funded from the SPOLOST $5 mentioned above.'" That's parks and recreation. Not fire. But that's where he was going to pull it from. Turn over to page 24. Section 111, paragraph 111, and this is the crux of it right here. This is why they want to settle, in my opinion. "Per Mr. Carter's advice, and without objection from the county attorney, who was copied on the memorandum, the Tiff County Board of Commissioners approved these transactions." The Tiff County Board of Commissioners, in other words, approved pulling money out of that parks and recreation, that general parks and recreation special purpose local option sales tax for the youth of this town, in this county, in Tai Tai and Omega, and said, "Let's put it over here and start a fire department so we can buy equipment, we can get uniforms, we can get turnout gear and all that kind of stuff." But did they ever approve that, Rob?
Not according to the minutes that I've seen.
So, we cannot find minutes where the Board of Commissioners approved it. And yet, Mr. Carter, in his deposition, says they did. He's throwing his commissioners under the bus, my friends. He did it. And he did it without your authorization as voters, and he did it without their authorization as commissioners. That is why they want to settle this lawsuit. Keep going, there's more. Turn to page 25. "County manager Jim Carter admitted that the county funded the establishment of its new fire department from SPOLOST funds." He did it. And then he admitted it. Turn to page 26, section 125. "County manager Jim Carter admitted that the county chose to use 2012 SPOLOST funds allocated for recreation projects on the county's new fire department." He did it, and he admitted it again. Read, take this home. This is yours, this is public information. You want to know why they're holding us hostage and wanting our water system? Because that's how they do business. Do you have enough copies for everybody to have?
There's one.
Okay, sorry. This is what we have in our water and sewer system. That's a lot of infrastructure to service this community. And by community, I don't mean city of Tifton, I mean community. That's a lot. They don't want to get in front of a judge, even though they're guaranteed, according to Mr. Pittman, that they're going to win, and boy, are we going to suffer. You think that's right? I don't. I don't think that's right at all. They want a water authority? Guess what? They have one. They have one that was created by House Bill Number 1678. It was created, the Tiff County Water and Sewer Authority Act, Number 1084. Again, House Bill Number 1678 was an act created by our legislators to provide them with a water and sewer authority. They have one. But they want our system to put it under. They want your system. You have a water authority, county? You have it, says it right here. Our legislators enacted policy to allow you to have it. Now, you ran it in the ground. It was up to its eyeballs in debt, your wells were capitated, you had contamination issues. And the city of Tifton said, "You know what? We'll help you out. We'll sell you bulk water. We'll do that." That's why we're being held hostage. We don't have a vote on lost. We have compromised everything. We have given them everything. I've had a lot of people call and ask me about consolidation. I am not opposed to consolidation, and I don't think any of these gentlemen are either. Let's have the conversation. But don't hold us hostage and take lost away so that you get what you want, like bullies in the playground. Consolidation is a three to seven year process. Consolidation doesn't mean one government remains and one government goes away. With consolidation, all governments are dissolved and brought back as one new government. It's expensive, and it's lengthy. But if that's the conversation the community wants to have, let's have it. And in the meantime, let's renew lost. We equalized your water rates. We'll take the 33%, and you'll still get water flowing through your pipes, quality water. You want a water authority? You have one. I've got the proof right here. Here's a House Bill. Provided your water authority. You don't need us. You want to equalize rates? You got it, we did it tonight, we did it. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your work, your research, thank you for doing it. You did it. You want the lion's share of lost? Done. You got it. But please, county commissioners, for everybody in this room, for every citizen that you're suing and forcing them to pay to defend themselves, the least you could do is renew lost. We'll let the court settle everything out if we need to. You want to end the lawsuit? We'll end the lawsuit. But not by giving you our water department. You come to the table and compromise with us. You come to the table and say, "All right, we'll renew lost." You equalize the rates, which we asked you to do, talking about us. You take the 33% which we said we'd give to you. Let the water flow. We'll go start our own system if that's what we need to do, county. I don't think that's the wisest thing to do. I didn't think it was wise to start a county fire department. And please understand, the gentlemen and the women, the ladies and gentlemen that work for the Tiff County Fire and Rescue are fine people. I am not disparaging them. I just don't think we should have had two departments when we had one fine department that served this community and served it well. I will be glad to answer any questions. You have all of us here. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to take them. Oh, guess who was first? Mr. Fowler. Yes. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to get a few things on my heart.
Just to total, just to clarify everything we've heard discussed tonight. Y'all have proposed a settlement on this so that we don't lose SPOLOST.
Lost.
Lost.
Lost. Yes, we have.
Now, at this point, that we're recording right now, the county is not in, they haven't agreed to this, am I right?
That is correct. And today is October the 3rd, is that right? And it is 7:22. So, our hope is that within the next few days, next few months, we can work something out. Lost, this local option sales tax expires December 31st, 2022. So, we, even though mediation technically is over, any, either of us can call the mediator back and go back into mediation. We don't even have to have the mediator. Any of us can have a conversation with any of the commission, not Mr. Carter, I'm not interested in talking to Mr. Carter, but any of the commission, and let's work this out.
The commissioners, are you saying that they had no answers as such? They passed the ball to Mr. Carter, but he wasn't even in the meeting? Is that what you're saying? The county commissioners?
Yes.
None of them brought anything to the table to explain any of this to y'all?
Well, any time, I'll let these gentlemen answer that. Any time that they asked a question, the answer was, "You need to meet with Mr. Carter."
Was that unanimous?
You need to miss in?
In all the questions, did they seem to come to settle this or to not?
Hey, we were asked, or invited, and I'm going to say, myself, Lester, and MJ, were invited to come to the county administration building and sit down with Mr. Jim Carter and have a conversation for him to explain everything to us. I, myself, asked in the meeting, "Since we're all here now, can it please be explained now?" They said it couldn't at that time. It'd be too lengthy, or what have you.
Well, I don't want to be facetious, but it sounds like the county commissioners do not understand what they want because they don't know the incidentals of it.
I don't think, I don't think they've been presented with all the options. Now, that's just my opinion. I've not been part of their meetings, I've not been part of their executive meetings, executive session meetings, which is confidential and in private. But this, it just seems to be that they don't have all of the information as far as all of the options that are open to them. And let me tell you something else. They are going to take this conversation with you tonight as, by God, this is war. And they are going to turn it up, and they are going to try to pit you against us. They've already told us, there was, there was, I'm just going to throw this out there if you don't mind me sharing your conversation, or would you rather not?
Well, you shared, I'd rather not say.
Who, okay. They're threatening Jack and myself with a recall. They're threatening to get candidates to run against MJ, Jack, and myself, who are all up for reelection next year. And that's fine, anybody can run for public office. I don't make my decisions on this council. And I know these gentlemen don't make these decisions based on coercion. In other words, you vote like I want you to, or I'll get someone to run against you. But let me remind you of another thing with Mr. Carter. I've been on this council for 10 years. When I first got on this council, they couldn't work with the fire chief at that time. We got a new fire chief, they couldn't work with him. I say "they," Mr. Carter couldn't work with him. Couldn't work with the city manager, so we got a different city manager. Couldn't work with that city manager. Mr. Carter stood up at the Chamber of Commerce meeting and talked about Pete Przynski and said, "I think I can work with Pete Przynski." Well, now he can't work with Pete Przynski. Couldn't work with former mayor. Now can't work with me. There's one common denominator in this long line of people who have come and gone with this city. And that's Mr. Carter. He's been here for 15 years. He is going to destroy this community. That is my prediction. Unless we do something about this. The county commissioners are elected by all of us in this room. One of the first questions I asked when we got into mediation with them that day we were in that joint session with them, "How many of you represent city constituents?" It took a few minutes for hands to go up. But when you go to vote, when it's a county election year, there are county commissioners on your ballot, whether you live in the city or the county.
And realize, six out of the seven live outside city limits. Just back.
I don't want to dominate, so y'all ask questions, but I got one more question.
Okay.
Mayor, you've said some pretty strong things here tonight.
People need to hear them.
Now, now, some of the stuff about the funds to build the fire department, does that border on illegalities? That they did it illegal? Or how do we, are you, are you saying they legally transferred those funds over? Or clarify that just a little, if you don't mind.
Mr. Carter's deposition is quoted here. And Rob, I may call on you, you know the legal terminology. Mr. Carter is quoted in this. The quotes that you have a copy of come from his deposition, which is public information. So, I'm not sharing anything that any of you could call and ask. Any of you can go down to the courthouse and get a copy of this, but I- But I wanted to make it easy for you to follow along, so I provided you with copies this evening. Rob, do you want to address that as the attorney?
I'll give you a quick shot. Basically, the 2012 SPOS referendum provided for certain projects, as Julie was describing. And one of those projects was for public safety. The discussions were for $2.1 million to be designated for public safety under SPOS five, for three new ambulances and use point to jail. So, we're talking about 2012. In 2015 is when the city, I'm sorry, the county wanted to start their new fire department. So, basically, they used SPOS five dollars to start a new fire department that was not a project that was approved in the 2012 referendum. So, basically, what you see is that they spent over $5 million in public safety to develop a new fire department. Well, naturally, they only had allocated $2.1. So, what they had to do was take money from Parks and Recreation, there was $4.5 million designated for that. They had to take $3.5 million from Parks and Rec, put it into public safety, so they would have the money to spend the fire department. So, the bottom line is, is that the new fire department was not a project approved by referendum. It was not a project approved under our interlocal agreement. So, that is an issue that we've raised in our most partial summary judgment, saying, Judge, this was not right. And we're saying that was against the contract and it was against the SPOS law.
So, you're saying that proper procedures were not handled according to the rules of using the money and transferring the money with it?
Well, and that's why, you know, in SPOS, in special purpose local option sales tax, the voters get to look at, okay, what, how are you going to use this money? And that way, when they go into vote, they know how you're going to use the money, and they can say, okay, I'm good with it or not. There was nothing on the ballot, on the referendum that talked about spending $5 million to build a fire department. That was not something that was voted on by the voters.
I gotta pause, I'm losing the battery. And I'm very gay.
Well, we've talked about a lot this evening, I want to open up, do any of you have questions of us? Yes, Mr. Green?
I'll wait till the chief.
Okay.
Yeah, please, if you don't mind. I think I could do it faster than this. Okay, just a second, if you don't mind.
All right.
I'm waiting, I'm signing in.
Okay. Excuse me. I have batteries, man. I'm getting one. I got two. Just charged all day. Oh, forgot.
Okay, you good?
Just a second. I'm sorry. I don't know what happened. Lord, this is the last battery. Do it on my phone.
Well, if that works, then I want you to say a prayer over lost too. If that's all it takes is a little prayer from Hayward, then we'll take it.
Yes, and sometimes, I don't know, y'all. I think we're going to be okay, think we're moving, I think I'm first, I'm sorry. I'm not missing anything really here. Come on, y'all, let's do this. I gotta flash my battery, we're going to go without it.
Okay, Bruce?
Talk fast.
Yeah, talk fast.
I'll talk fast. Mayor and council, I just wanted to say a few words, I'm sitting here listening to you. One is an ultimate thank you. But before I say that thank you, I was sitting over there thinking about what all has been going on in this community for years, but more specifically this year. And I was reminded, there's a line from Shakespeare, and it's called "The Winter of our Discontent." And that truly is, no matter where we go, somewhere in this community, somebody is talking about the discontent between the city and what appears to be the county. You know that I represent the Tifton Merchants Association, we have some of our members here tonight. We have attempted just to simply inform our business people about this very complicated dialogue, even more specifically and focused on the local option sales tax and what would happen if we lost the LOST and if we were presented with an option by the county who could only call for the referendum for a homestead option sales tax, homeowner's option sales tax. Again, a complicated process, but we've had a wonderful, two meetings. We're thankful to the city attorney who came and spoke at the first one, and then we had Mr. Bill Floyd, the former mayor of Decatur, Georgia, DeKalb County, who came and spoke on what it meant for them as the city of Decatur to go through the process of, with DeKalb County of establishing a host. And in the summation, and I asked the people to my left and to my right, and the people to my left, he basically said, I caution you. He really did. But it's not lost on me that we are in a building. And I was thinking about conflict and conflict resolution, that in 1945, a young boy who grew up in this building flew the most powerful man in the world in 1945 to a conference, to a peace treaty signing at Yalta, Iran. And you see that very famous photo in your mind of Churchill, Roosevelt, and Stalin. A boy who grew up in this very building flew our world leader to this point in time and place in time to sign the treaty to end a conflict that had killed fifty million people worldwide because people couldn't get along. And as a citizen, as the president of TMA, I want to say thank you because we've heard this in our ears outside of city hall and outside of the county commission room about transparency in government. Each of you sought the office. You were granted your seat, you were granted your authority to carry out what you are talking to us about tonight. You were granted the authority to make decisions on behalf of us. And all I can say is, at some, in this year of discontent, in these months of discussions, in this moment, we simply put our trust in you, that's all we can do. We can't make this decision. But I want to say thank you, I want to go back to that thank you. Never have I ever heard someone more clearly explain, using documents that explain it and handing out those documents, of just how complicated this issue is. And it cannot be made in a quick decision, but it can be. I think we as citizens want to, as we would say, get it behind us and move on. There is so much that this community, as the city and county working jointly together, can do, so very much. And we're hungry for that, we want that. But again, just thank you for being so absolutely honest with us tonight. There are people who may disagree with what you've said, and I understand that, but just thank you all for, for what you're doing. And all, again, we can say is, we put our faith in you.
Thank you, Bruce. And I wish I could say that the challenges that we're going through are the exception across our state. They are, we are not the exception. Everyone went through the census, so every, all hundred and fifty-nine counties in the state of Georgia are negotiating with the municipalities, with those five hundred and thirty-seven municipalities in the state of Georgia. Some of them have great understanding of the importance of cities within their county, and they've settled their lost distribution, and they're happy, and they've been submitted to Department of Revenue, and life is going on. But for the bulk, the majority of the hundred and fifty-nine, they're in the same fight for their lives as we are. And unfortunately, our legislators and their infinite wisdom, and we appreciate the work our legislators do, created legislation that has pitted us against each other. So, I have great hope for work being done right now to undo that, to create good legislation that does not allow one government to be pitted against a sister or brother or co-government because we represent all of the same people. And our attorney one time in conversation used an example that really resonated with me when he said, you know, it's kind of like mom and dad getting a divorce, and they hate each other, they just hate each other, and they just spew and spit and sputter at each other. And who's suffering? Not mom and dad, but the kids, and your citizens for the kids. And somebody needs to be the grandfather or the grandmother's stepdad and say, somebody protect the kids. That's what we're trying to do. We are trying to protect our citizens, and we're trying to do what's best, not just for those that live within that boundary of the city of Tifton, but Tift County, because nobody but us probably really knows where that exact boundary is, and it doesn't matter. We are all in this together. We have given the county everything they have asked for, except a water authority, except a title. But we have said, you will get water from us, we will provide water, and we'll do it well, because we have done it well. No pun on a well being part of a water system. We will do it, and we will do it in a manner that you'll be proud of. We equalize the rates, we'll, I'm going to, I'm going to stop hammering home on those. But you have our phone numbers, you have our emails, you have, you know where we live. Let us know if you have any questions, if you have any comments. But I need to reassure you, we are doing everything we can to compromise. Good government is compromise, it's listening, it's trying to do what's best for the greater community. And that is our desire and our goal. I know these four gentlemen, these are four good people. They care about this. They want this to go away as much as you do. This, this argument has cost all of us relationships, friendships, business. And it shouldn't be that way. You look at the success of Tifton in spite of all of this. Just think if we could all get together. Let me throw one last thing out, and then I'm going to stop talking. When word, when my city manager, when Pete Przynski decided that he was going to take a job with the Georgia Municipal Association, after I punched him in the nose, and then, no, when he shared that information with me, and I understand why Pete's doing that. It's a really good job. Pete's planning on retiring in several years, and this is, he'd be crazy not to. I'd probably encourage the council to fire him if he hadn't taken the job, it was that good of an option, opportunity for him. When he told me that he was going to be leaving, and then the council, and then our employees, after we sort of got over the shock of it, I got a call, I talk a lot to Tony McBrayer, our commission chairman, and I want to say something. He, I admire that man greatly, and he and I can talk very honestly with each other. And sometimes our conversations are confidential just between the two of us, but trust me, we talk and we want the same thing, which is ironic. And we want the same thing, and I think the commissioners really want the same thing too. But I offered Mr. McBrayer something. I said, you know, we're probably going to end up, so that we have the most, as many options for a good city manager as possible. We're probably going to end up hiring a recruiting firm to do a nationwide search. And the council will define who that person is. I said, I'll tell you what, let's do this. Why don't you ask Mr. Carter to go ahead and resign, or retire, or take another job, or whatever term you want, and I'll go raise the money for the county to join us with this, this group we're probably going to use? And let's go get two people, man, woman, black, white, I don't care, two people who can come into this community and work together and reunite us. Every one of us here at this table thought we would be that person. I thought I was going to be ten years ago. I can't get it done. Not with that manager. But let's, let's get two people, let's do a joint search, and I'll raise the money, so it won't cost y'all one stinking nickel. And he just laughed. Wouldn't that be something? I said, it would be. And that offer still stands, Mr. McBrayer. So, in closing, thank you for allowing me to share what's on my heart and what's on my mind. I didn't take this job to keep this job. I took this job to do the best for this community that I could. So, get people to run against me if that's what you want to do, or against any of these gentlemen. Recall us if that's what you want to do, but you got to prove we've done something illegal to be recalled. But we'll fight that fight. If I'm not in this seat at the end of next year, I will know that I have done good for my community. My grandchildren will be the beneficiary, and your grandchildren will be the beneficiary. Some of the actions we've taken tonight ensured that. Don't call us and ask us to cave in to the county. You call the county and tell them, we need this for our town, we need this for our county, we need this for Ta-ta, and we need this for Amiga, and we need this for South Georgia. That's where the action is, not here, it's over there at that administration building.
Julie, I'd like to say one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm very proud of you for standing up and saying what you said, because remember, I told you that, that you need to let everybody know what's going on.
And that's Ms. Fay, and by the way, when Ms. Fay talks, you better listen.
What I'm saying is, most of the people don't have a clue what's going on.
It's very confusing.
They think that y'all are just fighting.
Yeah.
Because of, because they think that they're here.
You can look up on Q Public, his name is there.
But that's what we've heard a lot, from Jim and Jim Carter. Now, one thing I can say about the city, is every time I go to the phone, it needs to be, he said, well, that's been trying to explain that's what's going on. And so has you, and so has yours, and your attorney. So, I'll say something else, not only does Mr. Carter not live here, the attorney, the county manager, he does not live here either.
He does not.
He is in Douglas.
Yep.
So, why would anybody care what happens in Tifton if they're not going to live in Tifton?
There's no consequence, she got home and, yeah.
There's one thing that I think that we should have kept recorded, is whenever Hayward recorded that meeting last week, we had it, about the host, that people just don't understand what that host really means. If I, when I lived here, can say all this thing, and I had to open up my business, and I just live, I would be glad to have them, to not pay any taxes. But we all know, when you hear the word free, I run, because free is a dangerous word.
Yes, it is.
And I told you, and I talked to you the other day, that you should let everybody know what's going on. And I'm very proud of you to not, but you did that.
Thank you.
Because people don't have a clue what's going on, they really don't. They just think that y'all are just having this long view, what's going on, and they really don't take the time. Like, this room tonight should be crowded, I mean, they should be, we should have had any seats there.
Right.
Because the way I look at it, if you don't vote, I don't want to hear your comments. You know what I'm saying? And, like I said, I'm just very proud of you.
Thank you, thank you for that, Fay.
And I think this is going to be a lot of them allowed to know what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Pete, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
There are rumors, and this town loves rumors, and I, well, a rumor if we can. Were you at odds with Jim, the county manager, in Valdosta? Is this an ongoing battle that you've been having with him, or can you clarify that for the community?
Sure, I've known Jim and his family when I was in Waycross on an acquaintance level. I've never worked alongside of him in my time in Valdosta, so I never had any interaction with him. And today, I still don't think that, that we're at odds, we, we disagree on many things, but that's where it stops.
And, and from your mouth, you're, I've really enjoyed you being city manager, okay? I want to say that. But from your mouth, you just really got a good job off.
Yes, sir, I mean, that's bottom line, and I was not expecting that, and it had nothing to do with, except, an individual decision of mine and five years down the road. So, it was a professional move that I couldn't obviously turn, turn down. And it did not have anything to do with Julie Smith, the mayor, who happens to be the GMA president. And in fact, she had nothing to do with the process.
Okay, that's...
Did I tell you that I own the house in Tiff County, and I still do? If anybody wants to know.
Look it up on Q Public. Look it up on Q Public.
I own a house in Tifton. I am a taxpayer. Greg Wood is my commissioner.
But Pete, they got to figure out how to spell your name to look your property up, so. It's on Will You Make Circle.
As a taxpayer of Tifton County, I do not agree with what's happening. So for the record, I am a taxpayer.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. It's almost 8 o'clock. It's been a long night. I appreciate your time. Gentlemen, anything else? Any other comments to go before the good of the organization? All right, we are adjourned.